I'd like to call the Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, June 28th, 2016, to order at 6:30. Would you please stand for the invocation by Father Theodore Patreus and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh Lord God Almighty, we pray to you to guide the members of the Maryville Town Council, as well as those to whom have been committed the government of this great town of Maryville. Grant them wisdom and understanding of counsel and strength that upholding what is right and following what is true, they may take care of all people regardless of gender, race, color, or creed. Let them also come together with concern, commitment, and dedication for the residents that they have been elected to serve. At this time, we also pray for our country, the President, all civil authority, and those who serve in our armed forces, all members of the police and fire departments, and the whole of the American nation. For your merciful God who loves mankind and who spread glory to the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, now and forever, to the ages of ages. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll Palm Street.
Span.
President.
I want to be the first one to welcome Mr. Mincheck.
Thank you, sir.
Are you here?
Yes, I am.
Yuzlak.
Yes, here.
Baron.
Here.
Patelis. Talis.
I'm here. Hey Randy, I'm here.
Okay, that's even.
Oh, man.
What the heck was that?
And you lost weight.
I could go to sleep right now, I'm so tired.
You're thinking of John.
Lamarcus.
Here.
I think Hardaway's the last one.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have seven.
That was fun.
Been a long time coming. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Also, I forgot that we need to keep Mary Ann from the clerk president's office in our prayers because she lost her son, and they've funeralized him today. So, we just want to keep that family in our prayers. Petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. We have a large gathering permit.
I want to make a motion that we approve the large gathering permit.
Second.
Motion in second that we approve a large gathering permit, is there any discussion?
Everything okay, Chief? This the same one we've had many years?
Security has posted Smithville. Commander O'Leary is in charge.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries seven zero. We have a letter from the Maryville School Corporation. Dear Mr. Hardaway, the Maryville Community School Corporation recently submitted a building permit for a bus facility upgrade project. We respectfully request Maryville Town Council waive the demolition permit fee of $100 and the building permit fee of $15,470. If you have any questions about the project, I'd be happy to discuss them with you. As always, the continued support and partnership of Maryville Town Council is very appreciated. Jeffrey T. Studebaker.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second that we approve the waived fees with the exception of inspections.
Yeah, they gotta pay the inspections. Sorry.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries seven zero.
Mr. President, on that note, from the schools, I have not met the new superintendent. Do we want to open an invitation at the next workshop to have him? Bruce, were you trying to set something up with him?
I have been over and visited him one day, but yeah, I've never really set anything up with him between him and the council.
I know, Rich, it's just an idea if we all want to.
Well, I've met with.
Fifteen minutes or something, you know?
I've met him, and I think that it would be good for the entire council to get acquainted with him. So, yeah, let's do that, Bruce, next workshop.
That would be August.
That's going to be August. We're not going to have a workshop in July. I think that we got, that's why we had the workshop last week, so that we could get those things out of the way, so that we could take July off. Anything else under petition communications? Okay, consent agenda for June 28th, and approval of Town Council minutes from June 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve the consent agenda for June 28th, as well as the Town Council minutes for June 14th. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries seven zero. Budgets and finance, Councilman Pettit.
Mr. President, I have no report unless Gene or Bruce do. We got our draw, we got in our draws?
Yeah, we did.
Already got them?
We just, yeah, we just got our draws, and the loan that we had taken out from Maryville, I'm sorry, from, yeah, from Maryville Road to Mississippi Street will be on the agenda at the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
For, yeah, to pay back the loan.
Okay. That's all I've got, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public Works, Councilman Span. Bruce, what we were discussing about this.
We had an item on the agenda tonight to accept the road improvements in Prairie Point Apartments Phase Four subdivision, but there was a couple items that Robinson found that hadn't been done yet, so we're going to postpone that till the next meeting.
Do we have the maintenance bond?
Yes, we have the bond in place.
That was 67,000 or something like that?
That's, I believe that was it, yes.
Okay, then I got one thing for you, Bruce. Grant Street, Don, which is ours, between 54, the 5400 block and the 5500 block, they did a, looked like a covert work, some covert work right there, and it's where you go across the street.
Right.
And that has sunk.
Okay.
And when they called Public Works today, Public Works told us that it'll be done by the end of the summer.
Oh, that's not the answer you want.
That's totally unacceptable.
Okay.
I just, without getting upset, that's totally unacceptable.
The road will be paved sometime this summer.
I understand.
There's other things to get taken care of.
But, yeah, but that right there, because I rode through there this afternoon myself personally, and you got to almost come to a complete stop in order to get through there.
We'll take care of it.
And please instruct the Public Works people that unacceptable.
Okay.
They got to give the citizens and the residents a better answer then, sometime by the end of the summer. I can imagine who gave them that answer, but that's as far as I'm going to go with it. Anything else on the Public Works? Council affairs, Councilwoman Yuzlak.
What did you ask for? I'm sorry.
Council affairs.
Oh, no report at this time.
Personnel policy and employee benefits, Councilwoman Baron.
No report.
Public safety, Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes, I had met with Joe Shute, trustee, President Hardaway, Bruce Byers, at a meeting involving the prompt ambulance. That was about two weeks ago, correct?
Yeah, dealing with the contract, yeah.
Yeah, about their contract, and you were supposed to contact Prompt. Did anything come out of that with any conversations?
We're in the middle of scheduling some meetings with some of the competition to see what services they would be able to provide for us, and that's going on right now. I think, I think when we left the meeting, it wasn't so much, our contract's up with Prompt in February, so there really isn't a whole lot that we can do between now and then with them, so we've sort of moved on from that, and we talked about in the meeting, we're going to change our contract and some of the needs that we're going to require. Like, one of them, instead of having two ambulances that quote "serves the town," there will be two ambulances that are required to stay in the town.
Exactly.
Yes.
There's things that we're going to have to change on that, so there's no, there won't be any gray area once we get done.
And we have discussed the time element for them, how many minutes it takes them to get to a house.
Response time.
Right.
The response time, right, so you were supposed to get to work on that with, with the contract, with the new contract if we get one. Okay?
The council, they sent us April's numbers, and miraculously, the response times were five minutes and 59 seconds.
For the average.
For the average. It's amazing.
And their contract says it can't be any more than six minutes.
Was it 5:59, 59, Rich?
No, it was 5:59, five minutes and 59 seconds. I don't know how they got there, but I tell you, buddy, God bless them.
Oh, no, no, no.
Anything else on the public safety?
Yes, we have one more. Mr. Petrus just handed me, please, Chief. This is the use of consumer fireworks within the corporate limits of the town of Maryville shall be limited to the following times and dates. Between the hours of 5:00 PM and two hours after sunset on June 29th, June 30th, July 1st, July 2nd, July 3rd, July 5th, July 6th, July 7th, July 8th, and July 9th. And that's between the hours of 10:00 AM and 12:00 midnight on July 4th. And then we have between the hours of 10:00 AM on December 31st and 1:00 AM on January 1st. Is that it, Joe? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would hope, Mr. President, and Chaz, you can quote me on this, I would hope everybody would use common sense this year, as dry as it's been.
Joe.
Everywhere in Maryville, Lake County is extremely dry. I have one individual in my cul-de-sac that I found four or five bottle rockets in my pool. On other, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, you know, and the cul-de-sacs in the tight areas, you know, I just, you can't stop them from burning up their money, but they've got to be cognizant of their neighbors.
Exactly.
So, I don't know.
And I'm sure that you're going to get some calls from Glenwood Manor, and only thing I can tell you there is maybe get with Hobart, because I think all of the noise is coming from the Hobart side of that subdivision, but, you know, the guy, whoever he's doing, he's shooting off quarter sticks or whatever. It's tearing that neighborhood up.
Any individual who does detonate fireworks, either during the season or otherwise, is legally responsible for the consequences of anything that.
So God forbid, John, if somebody's roof or something catches on fire, okay.
Okay, but then how you going to catch them? That's one of those that, I hear you, I hear both.
I hear loud music, Rich, but when the police come, the volume goes down.
Exactly, there you go, same thing, same thing.
Been down that road in my neighborhood, Joe.
The way we catch them is our detectives are the best.
Okay, John, thank you for. Parks and Rec.
Wait, we have a letter that Chief Petrus is going to read, addressed to him.
Under public safety, March has posted me to read the letter, a combination from Commander Cogner, reference, he would like to recognize Officer William Hanner for his involvement in apprehension of a homicide suspect. On June 5th, 2016, while working off-duty security at Broadway Methodist, Officer Hanner was monitoring calls from other local police departments. Officer Hanner noticed that a homicide had recently occurred in Gary. Officer Hanner was familiar with the suspect involved in the homicide through previous contacts. When Officer Hanner arrived at the second security job for the evening at South Lake Methodist Hospital, he immediately noticed the suspect sitting in the triage section of the emergency room. Officer Hanner was able to take the suspect into custody without incidents. G, Gary PD was notified and picked up the suspect a short time later. The investigation skills displayed Officer Hanner led to apprehension of extremely dangerous felon. For his efforts, in this case, Officer Hanner will be rewarded a level-two combination for his outstanding police work and great job in investigating this case and solving it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Joe.
Actually, that's actually kind of a coincidence, that's my case. I know, the Maryville officer did an outstanding job. We never would have caught this suspect in that case if it wasn't for his actions. Thank you to him.
Very good.
Small world.
Yeah.
Sure is.
You guys been pretty busy lately. Sure have. Thank you. Okay, anything else on the public safety?
No, that's it.
Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
I will give it to Jan, too.
Good evening. At the last council meeting, Mr. Hardaway had asked me to prepare a list of rules and regulations for the parks. I have prepared those for the council's review this evening with the recommendation from Attorney Bishemi in regards to the no weapons, firearms, or fireworks allowed, and this is strictly for the parks themselves, not the Prusen Center. So, with his recommendation, as far as the weapons, firearms, and fireworks go, I can move forward.
Okay, there's weapons and firearms, that's for inside your building, right?
No, that's for all the parks outside.
What about inside your building?
I didn't do Prusen yet, because it depends on, it depends on whether or not people are allowed to bring weapons in a public facility.
Phil, you want to chime in on this?
They shouldn't be allowed to bring them.
I was going to say, that's kind of a no-brainer, folks.
Yeah, that, that, that should just.
Well, I had.
It can, as far as ordinance goes, it includes the town hall, if you want to make an amendment, have John make amendment as far as the parks building.
Yeah, because it's a, you can't do it, you can't bring weapons in the town halls, and it's a government facility.
Any town, any town-owned facility should not be allowed to have weapons, fireworks or firearms.
Well, until it's approved, then I was going to get signs made up based on the council's recommendations.
Well, that's, 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 let's hear it from the group. What do you say, Roxanne?
Definitely.
Yeah, we don't want nobody bringing weapons.
Do we need an ordinance, John, like Joe said? We need to amend the ordinance?
There, I'd like to look at the ordinance. We may need on the weapons on public facilities, we may need to amend the ordinance with respect to the Prusen Center building inside facility itself, and what you intend to address here on the list is the park lands themselves.
Yeah, the park lands, myself, is probably most one of the four things, too.
Right, no, anywhere. Yeah, all right, okay, so.
So, the rules and regulations before you will be, signs will be made up, and those will be at every park. At the Prusen Center, it will be no weapons, firearms, or fireworks allowed, and no animals allowed other than service animals.
Right.
Okay.
Inside the building.
Yes.
Right, not a problem. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, anything else on the parks?
Yeah, also asked me to get ahold of Gwen Gas for the Maryville seniors. I just would like to give you an update on that. They're closing this Thursday. They did receive a grant that kept them open to this point from Greater Hammond. Unfortunately, the grant is no longer available for them, so they will be closing. However, she did talk to Dr. Studebaker, and he said that there is a possibility that he might be able to work with them, however, they will need somebody to pay the liability insurance for the building, for the daily lunches, and for her stipend. I did pull out our programming block. I do not have 9:30 to 12:30, Monday through Friday, to accommodate the seniors. I do have certain programming blocks that I could share with them. Gwen would like to wait to see what Dr. Studebaker says to her before moving forward.
Another reason for a 15-minute discussion, Mr. President.
Lastly, I did contact NICA for the Maryville seniors to see if there was a grant available for them to take advantage of to stay in the Maryville facility. They have not returned my call.
Did Marilyn Huber from Our Lady of Constellation get in contact with you? She approached me during vacation Bible school last week, Mr. President, and there are several parishioners at Our Lady that are concerned about the Maryville seniors closing. I directed them toward Jan. Again, with our relationship we have with the Maryville School Corporation, especially through the Redevelopment Commission, you guys know how I am, politely and discreetly remind the superintendent of what we do, and we need to figure something out. And I'd be so far to go, guys, if we have the support is, maybe the town does the liabilities, depending on the premium, and you do the rest, and we'll take the liability premium out of one of our funds.
Well, here's the other.
It serves as our taxpayers, our residents, our seniors, it's not, you know, it's not a big, so, I don't know.
But here's the other part of that, Sean, is that they were feeding them breakfast and lunch?
They're feeding them lunch daily.
That's all, okay, and now they lost that part of the funding also, which is kind of like a concern. But let's, let's look at, let me contact the lady from Food Bank Northwest Indiana, and let's see what we can get going there.
And I'll report back from any information I get from NICA, because I did reach out to them as well.
Yeah, okay, but, you know, I mean, we got to do something, because I know it encompasses one, two, three, four of us that's sitting up here now, in case we want to come for lunch.
And I'm close, Rich.
You're not there yet, but we, we deep into it.
Josh, Brian, Roxanne are probably the only two.
I just asked Gene, I said, where is this? I never even.
That's what I'm saying.
Marj is looking for a lunch spot.
Yeah, we're always looking for lunch.
That's all right, I'll be okay.
The guy in the back of the room back there, he's part of this, too, don't look outside. So, yeah, but let's find out what you can do, and then I will reach out to Food Bank Northwest Indiana and see if they have any programs or know of anything, you know, unfortunately, most of their food is unprepared, but maybe we can come up with something where we can get it prepared somewhere, or something like that. All right, that's good. Anything else on the Parks and Recreation?
No, sir.
Thank you. Environmental Affairs, Councilwoman Baron.
I have no report, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lake.
Yeah, we actually started to collect field topographic data to assess drainage improvement options in Forest Hills, in particular at the end of Sunset, a lot of the drainage converges to that point, that runs through a bunch of backyards through some clay tile, which is in pretty bad shape. We camered that area, so we're looking to do a project over there, but right now we're just collecting all the data to see what our options are. It was out there today, a lot of inlet structures are even buried, you know, two feet in the ground, we're using metal detectors to find them and uncover them, so once we see what we got, we'll see what our options are. And actually, at the end of Sunset Road, there's a platted street there, Plymouth Road, that was never built, so we got a 40-foot right-of-way through there, so we could have some options there to create some linear storage, or maybe convey that water to the, to the east and get it into the actual ditch directly from there, so, so we're looking at all options for that particular area. Also, Robinson Engineering completed our new stormwater infrastructure atlas, it'll be posted on our website. I'm waiting for hard copies, which I'll share with all the, all the utilities around us, so they know where, where our infrastructure is according to our atlas. And then Rex Construction will be starting on a drainage improvement project at the 7800 block of Virginia very soon. We'll get that done, and then the paving can, can occur afterwards, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Anything else? Economic Development, Councilman Pettit.
No elections.
Elections? No, I know, oh, okay, elections, public relations.
Yes, I'm happy to report that the town of Maryville now has a Facebook page to help inform the community on events, road closures, emergencies, anything like that. You can find us on Facebook, and there will be a like us on Facebook button on our town website by the end of the week. Also, we'd like to invite everybody out to the Fourth of July Parade this year, July 4th at noon, starting at 80th and Broadway, traveling north to 68th and Broadway. It starts at noon, please come out. That's it.
Mr. President, I have one question, through Roxanne's committee actually, to Bruce, and I may have asked you this before, Bruce, and I'm sorry if I did. What's the status of the welcome to Maryville signs? I know they're on order, do we have?
We have them in.
We have them in.
We're just waiting to get the permits back from the state, so we can start installing them.
Okay.
We need, we need right-of-way permits.
Yeah, I figured you probably, yeah, that'll be, we'll see those in, if it's anything like my job up north, we'll see those signs up in December, the way Endout works. Oh, okay.
The same, the same group of gentlemen who do our parks are going to be the ones that install the sign, so they just got done with Forest Hills Park, so probably next week sometime they'll start to put down the signs that are in within Maryville right-of-way.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
What time are we starting to line up for the parade?
How many applications so far?
Forty-two so far. We have forty-two applications, but within those applications, we have like two and three groups, so right now I'm estimating sixty to seventy entries.
That's good.
Good. Do we have candy to pia-sa, like they used to?
It's provided by the individuals.
We have to buy our own candy, Marj, I.
Oh, okay.
I share your pain, dear, believe me, I've been fighting for.
There is no pain.
Trying to explain to other people, town promotions, and what, you know, that means, and so on.
You want candy?
Okay.
I don't want candy, Bruce, I already went to Costco and got mine, Phil's driving me, right, Phil?
In case I have to get candy.
Yeah, no, you can't throw any.
I what?
You can't throw any.
You have to hand it.
Oh. It'll be inside a car.
You have to hand it to them.
You can't throw it inside, if you're inside.
You can't do this, okay.
You have to walk and be out.
You're in.
If you're walking.
No, I'm not.
You're riding.
The parade's going to get over about three.
I don't want to walk.
I'm telling you, but by the time the parade's over, it'll be July the 5th.
Yeah, no, it won't. I'm a very fast walker.
Nope. I'm not.
Okay. Okay, right along. Economic Development.
No report, Mr. President.
Utility liaison, Councilwoman Baron.
No report.
Abandoned properties, Councilman Hardaway, as everyone should know by now, we did finally knock down the house at 122 West 55th Avenue, so if you ride by there, it's, the lot's cleared, they've got grass planted, and everybody's happy. I can ride down 55th Avenue now, and nobody's shooting at my car.
Mr. President, I have one issue that John and I talked about in the vestibule, and I'm going to go ahead and bring it up since we're moving along here. I would like to ask the hearing officer and the attorney, Mr. Deppi, to start coming to the abandoned properties and meet with the council, as we did a pow-wow with the BZA and Plan Commission before, so he can, they can get our take on things. As you guys know, I've been extremely vocal, and I'll continue to do it about 7100 Broadway, and now I find out that the order was given, it's 90 days before that building comes down, which again, to use your vernacular, Mr. President, unacceptable. I got to live with that, because Mr. Geikas didn't know what my feelings were for the businesses on the east side, and I thought that was going to be an easy fix. We also need to look at some of these properties that are continually on that blighted agenda for six months, nine months, continuations, no, that's not good, that's not good for the seven of us or for the residents of Maryville, and we need to, like we did with the BZA and the Plan Commission, I think we need to sit the two gentlemen down and say, look, this is what's going to happen, this is what we want as the seven leaders, and give them some direction. Is that a nutshell, John?
Yeah, Mr. President, members of the council, I think Councilman Pettit's suggestion is a sound suggestion. I think that the hearing officer, Mr. Geikas, should attend an upcoming meeting, so he understands the relationship of his enforcement proceedings with our work of our committee, the unsafe, the abandoned and vacant committee meeting, and I think that it probably would be a good idea, since Attorney Deppi prosecutes our unsafe building cases at those monthly hearings, that he attend the, on a regular basis, the monthly vacant and abandoned committee meetings, so that there's coordination and sharing of information.
So you want to attend the next?
We do the next workshop.
Next workshop in August.
I mean, it's.
You good till then?
Yeah, I'll calm down.
Are you sure? Okay, all right, that's, that's when that'll be, not a problem. So, yeah, but there is a, you've got one out by you that we're looking to demolish.
Yeah.
That, that we've already.
West Mill.
Yeah, we've already got the order, so we're going to do that one, and then there's Garage, I think it may be in your, that we're looking at, too.
Okay.
All right, that's all we got there. General orders, first reading ordinance, and ordinance to establish responsible bidding practices and bid submission required for Public Works projects, that's ordinance number 16-18.
Council members, you should act on the document that actually has the number on it, not the document that has a blank at the top. It should say at the top, ordinance number sixteen dash eighteen.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak that we approve ordinance sixteen dash eighteen on first reading. Is there any discussion?
Span.
Yes.
Mincheck.
Aye.
Yuzelak.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Edet.
Yes.
Lamarcus. And Hardaway.
Yes, motion carries seven, zero. Do we want to, uh, waive the, do we wanna waive it so we can get that?
Do we need to, Bruce?
That's at the discretion of the members of the council.
We talked about that. It was brought up.
I can make a motion that we waive.
Uh, uh,
Bring it back. There's no discussion on it.
Well, you want to suspend the rules?
Suspend the rules, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
If, uh, to suspend the rules, it'll require unanimous vote of the members.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilman Pettit that we suspend the rules on ordinance sixteen dash eighteen for, uh, to permit second reading, is there any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Gurney.
Span.
Yes.
Mincheck.
Aye.
Yuzelak.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Edet.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
And Hardaway.
Yes, motion carries seven, zero, okay.
Now eligible for second reading and public hearing.
Okay, so at this time, we'll go to ordinance sixteen dash eighteen on second reading, ordinance to establish responsible bidding practices and bid submission requirements for public works projects.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Barron that we approve ordinance sixteen dash eighteen on second reading. Uh, is there any discussion? Seeing none, at this time, because it is the second reading ordinance, I'd like to open it up for a public comment. Please come up, state your name and your address.
Hi, everybody. Randy Paulmatier, I live in Crown Point, is the one who stated. 1327 Wright Drive. But I do represent the building trades that covers Lake Porter, Duke, and Jasper Counties. With me is Dewey Pearman from the CAF Construction Advancement Foundation and the Contractors Association. So, uh, I just wanna thank you on behalf of the local workers and the contractors in Northwest Indiana for passing this ordinance. And without all of Dewey, say anything.
Thank you, members of council, Dewey Pearman, 9090 Lincoln Street, Maryville. Uh, my organization represents about six hundred contractors that work in Northwest Indiana market. A vast majority of the projects you have built and will build going forward are likely contractors that are members of our organization. We wanna thank the council for your interest in this ordinance, and we urge your, uh, vote to pass. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Mincheck.
Aye.
Yuzelak.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Edet.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
And Hardaway.
Yes, motion carries seven, zero.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, ordinance, back to first reading ordinance. Ordinance sixteen dash nineteen, an ordinance of the Town Council of Town of Maryville, Indiana to establish communication services project permit procedures for the Town of Maryville to be certified as a broadband-ready community. Mr. Bishemi?
Uh, this is an ordinance that would position the town to be recognized by the Indiana Economic Development Commission as a broadband-ready community. And one of the provisions that's included in the ordinance that's required for this certification as a broadband-ready community is that the town suspend, uh, all permit fees for these types of projects, which are to establish communication services, including installation of broadband services.
I'll make a motion to approve, and it's about time. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak that we approve ordinance sixteen dash nineteen on first reading. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Mincheck.
Aye.
Yuzelak.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Edet.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes, motion carries seven, zero. Okay, that concludes first reading ordinance. Second reading ordinance is, ordinance sixteen dash fifteen, ordinance of the Town Council of Town of Maryville, Indiana, creating a LOIT 2016 Special Distribution Fund retroactive to May 20th, 2016, to receive a one-time distribution LOIT funds, of LOIT funds, to account for the restricted use of said funds and appropriating money from the fund for local road and street uses as specified by IC six dash three, uh, six dash nine dash seventeen H.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak that we approve ordinance sixteen dash fifteen on second reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, at this time, because it's a second reading ordinance, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Any public comment on ordinance sixteen dash fifteen? Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Mincheck.
Aye.
Yuzelak.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Edet.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes, motion carries six, seven, zero. Ordinance number sixteen dash seventeen, an ordinance of the Town Council